I would like to remind everyone.
To please make sure that our cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. I call the chair, calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the role call.
Councilwoman Tolls.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for the ability to come to City Hall and to do the work of the city. Father, we'd like to pray and remember those that have lost loved ones in our community, those that are sick at home and in the hospitals. Also like to have a special prayer for our healthcare workers and our first responders that continue to answer the never-ending call. We'd also like to pray for safety as we have weather concerns coming our way in the following 48 hours. God, just keep everybody safe during that time. Father, we pray for wisdom for this council, for the mayor, as we do the business of the city, and may our thoughts and words and actions be pleasing unto you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, we'll hear from the EMA. I believe Mr. Golden is here to represent.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. On the COVID front, let's get to that first. Just to put this into some perspective, in the United States, we're up to 29.5 million cases. And of those cases, over half a million people have died. In Alabama, we're over a half a million cases with 10,000, about 10,400 deaths. We've had almost 2.4 million people tested in Alabama. And if this information is correct, I've seen two different numbers today. It's either 170,000 vaccinations or 460,000 doses, which could mean two-dose vaccinations and single-dose vaccinations. So our vaccinations are on the rise, which is good. The numbers are declining for the state and for the county. We're at 13,553 cases for Etowah. 335 people have died. And we're averaging, last week, the average was 12 new cases per day. And that's significantly better than what it was three months ago. Of course, we're trending down. We're in the low-risk category. And now for the statewide, the worst group for cases is the 25 to 49 age group. Those are the people that are getting out and doing things. So I don't know what y'all have seen out in the public, but a lot of people now think this is over. It's still not over. You know, masking and social distancing and hygiene are still very important. There are several places that you can still get vaccinated or schedule a vaccination, and that's the Etowah Center for Internal Medicine, Etowah County Health Department, Anderson Pharmacy, that's in Altoona, Gadsden City Pharmacy, Gadsden Regional, Jerry's Discount Pharmacy, Hughes Pharmacy, Riverview Medical Center, Super B, Southside Family Pharmacy, Mountview Hospital, Rick's Discount Drugs, CVS in East Gaston, and both of our Walmarts. You can schedule a vaccination there. So let's move on to the weather. Any questions about COVID?
Yeah, Mark, I'd just like to know, ask you if you knew how many people got vaccinated at A Community Center this weekend?
We don't have that number. We were not involved in that.
I think the quality of life did that, and if you had the numbers.
Right, no, sir. We were not involved in that and actually didn't even know that it happened until yesterday. So, well, you know, it's like 911. If you don't call, we don't know. So.
Hey, Mark, one of Johnson and Johnson, they're supposed to be having that medication coming in. Do you know when?
No, sir, we don't. We don't. And that will be probably through the county health department.
Good.
And that will be the best contact to know about if they will have the Johnson and Johnson and when they will start distributing it. Okay. So the good thing about COVID is we are on the decline, but we still need to stress social distancing and masking and hygiene. It's the only way we're going to get through it if we all work together and realize that our, our personal wishes sometimes affect other people's health. And I think that's what people miss sometimes in all of this. So even if we don't wear a mask for ourselves, we still need to wear a mask for other people. Okay, the weather. There will be an official's weather briefing today at 2:00. We will have a conference call, so I'm sure all you will get the message. And that'll be at 2:00 today. Tomorrow, tomorrow will be a very serious weather day for Alabama. We're looking at impacts at Alabama beginning any time tomorrow morning with the potential for some isolated tornadoes, straight-line winds, and hail. There's going to be some supercell formation out in front of the main line, and we're expecting that to move into the state around 3:00 tomorrow afternoon. By 7:00, this is going to be really well organized as it starts to move, as the main line starts to move into Alabama. The National Weather Service is stressing that, they are stressing that we are to expect strong, long-track tornadoes in the state tomorrow. They're possible through the evening and into Thursday morning, so this is going to be an overnight dark time event. Also, we expect winds up to 80 miles an hour and golf-ball-sized hail. That's enough to run your roof. We're encouraging everyone to prepare today for tomorrow. Tie down loose objects, you know, get some stuff together for your sheltering plan, you know, have a, have at least two ways to get weather information, whether it's a cellphone or a weather radio or, you know, we can't always depend on the internet to be up because a lot of that's strung along utility lines. But also, the local shelters will be open when there's a what. And in Gaston, that's on Gladys Street at Dwight Park and on Mississippi Street behind the old Quality of Life, JW Stewart Building there. People, if people still want to get weather radios, they could find those at Walmart and Academy. That's the only place in town that has those. And you can still get wireless emergency alerts on your cellphone. You have to, you have to enable that on your phone. And we have shelter information at www.shelteretowah.com, and you could sign up for free weather alerts for your phone also at www alertetowah.com. So any questions about the weather? Okay. Please encourage your departments to prepare, and the possibility of incurring overtime might be, might be something that we're going to have to look at for the whole city and the whole county. And also, you know, I'm sure they're making their equipment ready. So anyway, y'all stay safe, have a good day.
All right, thank you. We will continue with our agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting that was held on March the 9th.
Show move, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March the 5th through the 11th.
Show move, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Do we have any proclamation? Unfinished business, we have none today. This is a time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of a nuisance on property located at 17 South Sixth Street in District 4, Noah E. Smith and Sandra Beck being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This property was recently purchased from Ms. Beck. She's still listed as a deed holder, but there has been some recent activity improvements there, and we're asking that this case be tabled for 30 days. And it does involve a fourplex. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
Good morning to the council, council, to the mayor, and to the council president, to the council. I'm Glenda Jackson. I live at 634 Turntown Street, and I am speaking on, as a representative of the people in the neighborhood. I'm the Neighborhood Crime Watch Coordinator, and many times that the district community and the historic district have met, have met together, and there are several ladies that are, have expressed concern, and we have expressed concern over this property for many years. It was up for abatement in 2019, and some work was done on it, just putting siding, they gutted it. There's about, oh, there's about 10 feet in diameter of trash in the back. I talked to Councilman Back on Saturday, Sunday, and yesterday, and he had told me about what he and Mr. Harbison had discussed about the person wanting to give them 30 days. And I had spoken to some of the ladies. One of the persons that's lived in the community has been there for 22 years, and when the previous owner, as Mr. Harbison mentioned, Ms. Beck owned it, and then it's been owned by several other people. It's just been an eyesore in the neighborhood, and it, you know, and we concur with allowing him because some work has started, and I've taken some pictures prior to and now. However, I don't think that the owner realizes that the ongoing mess that's there. We have had robberies last year in that vicinity, right in that area, from Turntown Street to Randall Street. It was a robbery there. That house, that quad, has had mattresses thrown out, and there's nobody living there. It's been gutted. The grass has been at least four to six feet tall. The people in the neighborhood deserve to be treated better. We concur with allowing him to give them 30 days, but people in the neighborhood who own houses, their property value is decreasing because of this eyesore that's been there, and I've lived there for 14 years. The other lady that I spoke to has been there for 22 years. And many of the ladies, and I talked to our representative, Gil, today, because I always like to keep him informed because it's the residential area for the historic district and people in the neighborhood. It may not be people who own $60,000, $70,000 houses, but their property, but they warranted to be respected when their property value is decreasing because of this plot of quad that's been there for, and I saw, I know for 14 years and strongly for the last seven. And so I just wanted to express the sentiments of the people in the neighborhood because, and as Mr. Harbison has asked, there's a pile of, they started doing some siding that I took pictures of, but the trash in the back is, as I said, eight to, about eight to 10 feet in diameter high. Someone has put a stove back there in the last six to eight weeks. They put a stove back there, and I think people are using it as a dump. And I would like to bring this attention to the city council so that you can understand. I don't live in a district, but it's a thoroughfare for districts, for the district I live in and District 4. And so that's the reason I brought it to the attention of Councilman Back. And I would like for you, and that's the reason I'm giving you a little bit of history of that quad, as it has been an eyesore in our community, and the people who have property and property owners, they deserve to be treated better because their property is devaluing their property as homeowners. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jackson, just to clarify, I thank you for speaking, but you, you are in agreement that, that giving them 30 days, you would be in agreement with that?
Provided that he, he started on it, he started putting siding on it last Friday.
So he's just, I'm just saying, you're willing to give him another 30 days?
Give him another 30 days, as long as he does it. But the people and, and all of us in the community, they wanted it to be abated now.
Oh, I know, I know.
But they are, but they are wanting, they are giving him, you know, I'm speaking because the people are saying, yes, they, it's okay.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. Yes, and so that trash in the back, you know, as I had talked to Councilman Back yesterday about that, that's an issue that needs to be addressed.
Ms. Jackson, thank you for all your work. You're a tireless worker for your neighborhood and your area and for the city, and I appreciate your leadership over there. And as Mr. Harbison said, we're gonna, he's been on the property, meeting with the owner, and there's a plan. They'll have 30 days, excuse me. At the end of 30 days, if it's not completed, then, then Mr. Harbison will take action at that time, or the, you know, the building department will. So we're going to keep a close watch on that. You know, it's a fourplex, that could be four families could be living there. Our housing stock is in need of, of those type of dwellings, so we're going to, as always, do all we can to make sure that we're doing everything we can do within the confines of the law to provide housing and not just tear a house down that doesn't need to. But this one's gone on long enough, and I appreciate the building department's actions of what they're doing in the neighborhood also. Thank you.
What about the trash?
The trash in the back, I think Mr. Harbison and I talked about that this morning. He's aware of that, and that's being addressed also.
It'll be gone this week.
It'll be gone this, it'll be removed this week.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion we table for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1414 Centers Avenue and District 5, Belinda Gray being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in February of 2020. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure?
That one already came through.
That one already came through. Did, uh?
Sent them.
Yeah, Ben, I just took a picture. Oh, we had. Coming to you.
Did I do this? Okay. Thank you. Here too. That's where it's at.
Councilman Wilson, is that the one on center?
Yes, ma'am, this one I thought it was. Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement on property located at 3014 Topeka Street in District 6, and this is the estate of John Wally, heir to the estate being Rilla Wally, with Linda Aiken assigned as guardian and conservatory, and Rilla Adeline Walla being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, since this number of 12 and 13 is by the same owner, and they're right next to each other, can Mr. Harbison just bring both of these up at the same time?
Yes. Yes.
I provided y'all both of the pictures. He took both of them. It's the same owners, and I will say, well, Mr. Harbison, before he gets up, the owner has called Mr. Harbison and said they want these two houses pushed down. There's been some trouble there, and they just want them pushed down and gone. And both of them, you can see, is actually coming into wood lines there.
And this would be property at 3014 Topeka and 3018 Topeka Street in District 6, both, and they're by, they are by the same owners that I just read previously.
You ready, Ms. Taylor, for Mr. Harbison?
Is there anyone? I was waiting till the pictures go around.
Madam President, we filed both these cases, 3014 and 3018, on the same day, January 31st of last year. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate both nuisances. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate, second. On both of them, please. Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote? This is for item 12 and item 13.
Those in favor, to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Our next resolution is appointing member to the Gaston Airport Authority, and this appoints Billy F. Billings Sr. to replace Jack Ragland for a term expiring on July 30th, 2023. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Aye.
Is there any discussion? The only thing that I'd like to say, I think it was said in a previous, pre-council, but that this had been vacant for a while, but I don't think Mr. Ragland has been deceased six months, so this position has not been vacated that long. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution, appointing members to the library board. This appoints Hilda Moody to replace Barbara Woods for a term expiring February the 16th, 2025. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move. Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next is authorizing community development block grant cares. This is the CDBG CV grant application and certification, and this is for funds provided through the CARES Act to be used for response to the coronavirus pandemic, and the amount is $500,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Renee here, let her, want to talk about it? Ms. Baker, I'm sorry.
Good morning. I'm Renee Baker, the Community Development Planner for the City of Gaston. This money is, the state of Alabama received $50.4 million in CARES Act funds from the federal government, and this is directly from HUD to the state. The state of Alabama allocated all of this 50.4 million to the state's 67 counties and their 13 entitlement communities, and the City of Gaston is an entitlement community for HUD funding. So they allocated $500,000 to the City of Gaston. This is not a competitive grant, there's no match, but we do have to send an application in, so that is why the resolution, resolution is before you today, just so we can make application for that $500,000 allocation.
And this is not to be confused with the most recent stimulus package.
This is a, yes, this was in place prior to that, that bill being signed, so this is a separate pot of money that is separate also from our regular CDBG funding that we get.
Now, tell, what can we use this for? Has it been allocated already?
No, sir. This is actually, the grant actually has, application has to be in April 1st, so we're on a short deadline, but it can be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic and other infectious diseases. The grant should focus on the community's needs in terms of healthcare crisis, loss of jobs, loss of income, housing and homeless needs, needs related to the city's reduced tax base, food insecurities, business closures, and other related factors. So we have some projects that we need to come up with. We have some, some ideas and some suggestions that we've received from some of the agencies and organizations in the community, so we've got some ideas that we're going to work on and try to get these activities into a written project, I mean, projects on paper with a budget for those going forward. And then that will be brought back to you before that's submitted to a DECA.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing a special use permit to T-Mobile, and this is for the modification of equipment. Mm-hmm. Did I? I did, I did. Trying to move right along. This is a, the next item is a resolution authorizing a Second Amendment memorandum of agreement with J.R. Wilburn and Associates. Due to the COVID-19-related delay, the term of the agreement is being extended to May 31st, 2021, and this is for the compilation of a long-range transportation plan required by the Gaston-Etowah Metropolitan Planning Organization under agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, now we'll have the resolution authorizing a special permit used to T-Mobile, and this is for the modification of their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunications facility located at 1124 Seneca Drive. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Mine. Our next item is a resolution authorizing special use permits to the T-Mobile. This is for modification of their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunications facilities located at 747 Wall Street. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move. Second.
Clerk, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing a Fifth Amendment to the tower attachment lease agreement with T-Mobile South, and this is for the upgraded equipment on the city's communication tower located at 909 Bellevue Drive. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Is there any new business?
Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any new business?
Good morning. I'm here to give an update on Parks and Recreation and some of our reopenings that we've been having. We did reopen Miranda Park on March 1st. The park has been busy with visitors, and Pavilion Rentals has been full on each weekend. Couso London has started tournaments in January and has hosted multiple tournaments each weekend. March 27th, we are hosting a 200-plus boat high school tournament there, and we're excited to have them in for the weekend. In athletics, we had seven youth basketball teams qualify for the state tournament this past weekend. Two teams did make it to the championship games, and they are, they came in second place. championship games, and they are, they came in second place, so it was a great tournament up in Abbot. Youth basketball, or youth baseball practices started March first, and league games are scheduled to start April fifth. Weekends tournaments are scheduled to begin this weekend with, depending on the rain and weather. Remember, we are hosting the NSA Softball World Series July twenty-first through twenty-fifth. Community centers are reopening this weekend with limited hours. Monday and Thursday from five to eight P.M., we'll open Walnut Park and Thompson Gyms. Tuesday and Thursday from five P.M. to eight P.M., we'll open Mitchell and Raymond Hill Gyms. Monday through Thursday from ten A.M. to eight P.M. and Friday, ten A.M. to five P.M., we'll have Carver Community Center open. We are working on reopening Elliot Community Center and to take rentals in the centers and to open more slots in our after-school programs at Walnut Park, Thompson, Mitchell, and Raymond Hill. We'll be hosting a spring break camp at Mitchell and Walnut Park, March twenty-seventh through April first. Knocklough Falls Park has also reopened on March first. We've had high attendance at the park. The campground has stayed full most weekends, and we're gearing up for a busy spring break week. March sixth through seventh, we had NICA who hosted a high school mountain bike race on the Black Creek Trails, and this was close to seven hundred racers with thirty-two teams. That included two teams from Mississippi and a team from Louisiana. Upcoming events in Parks and Recreation on April third, we have the Cousteau-Lantern Super Bass Tournament. April tenth, we have Smoke on the Falls. This event is full with competitors, and we have a waiting list of twenty-one teams. April tenth and eleventh, we have Art on Rocks with seventy-six vendors already applied and accepted. May sixth through ninth, we'll have Bass Masters Elite Tournament at Cousteau-Lantern. May eighth, we'll have the kids' fishing rodeo at Miranda Pond. May fourteenth, Strawberry Day at Fifth Street Market, and May twenty-eighth, we'll, our farmers markets reopen. We at Parks and Recreation, Light Public Works are now accepting applications for summer seasonal workers and have non-full-time staff slots still open. Barbarian Challenge registration is open, and please keep updated on all of our events and programs at gaston dot recdes dot com or on Facebook at Gaston Parks and Recreation. Thank y'all.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You said you had nine full-time positions open in Parks and Recreation. Is that right?
Nine full-time. There are part-time.
Oh, okay. All right.
So we've had multiple rehires. We had a lot of staff that did retire during the COVID season, but we've rehired. I think we have one closed yesterday, and we'll be opening up one more full-time position, but most of our positions are non-full-time or seasonal help.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that right.
Yes.
Okay. We now have remarks by the mayor.
Can I ask Renee to say something else, please? Because I want to make sure, because someone made an announcement last week about the, I want to make sure we hadn't changed the policy about the paint program and paying up to seventy-five hundred dollars on people's homes, but I think it's still at four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Is that correct?
We have not done the paint program in many years because of the EPA regulations.
Right.
Yes, it does. That, we.
We don't have that.
We don't. Would you set it up there? So I want the public to have the right information.
Certainly. Yeah, the paint program that was under the CDBG office, we did have to do away the paint program several years back because of EPA regulations. That was set up where we paid for the paint supplies for volunteers to come in and paint homes, but EPA regulations were changed within the past several years, and it was requiring us to go through training every year or every other year to become certified paint renovators and this sort of thing, where we would have to be onsite, train those volunteers. They had to be in full PPE gear. They could not do anything but hand-scrape a home. There was, you know, you couldn't pressure wash. You couldn't do anything. It was really, it just basically put us where we could not do that program any longer. Didn't have any volunteers who wanted to go through that process, essentially, so we just did away with the paint program. We do still have our housing repair program. It is a limit of forty-nine ninety-nine ninety-nine in CDBG funds, and that is still open. We have an extensive waitlist right now. We are not currently taking, we, housing applications. New housing pre-app, applica, waitlist is what we have. We do a pre-application and do a waitlist, so we are not taking those at this time. We've kind of postponed that and paused until we kind of get caught up with those people that are already on that list. We made that decision within the last couple of weeks because it's not fair to people, our citizens, to put them on a waitlist and then think we're going to get to them when we are still on a, probably a year's worth of people on a waitlist. So we've kind of paused that at this time, and once we go back to taking these applications, we will announce that to the public, and we'll get that back on the city's website. We will take someone and put them on the list and assess it if it is a true emergency, if it's a health and, and safety issue of a, of true emergency nature. We will address that. So if the hospital calls us about someone, or our medics, or first responders call and say we can't get this person out of the home, they need this, or they need a ramp, or their, their roof is literally falling in on them, we will go out and assess that and see if it is something we can do under the program, and go ahead and see if we can get that taken care of.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Will you send us stuff, email stuff to us that, let us know when the program's in, like the paint program and stuff like that, because I didn't know it ended till you just said that today.
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to do that.
I know. I've used a lot of those paint programs in Alabama City and also when they put roofs on houses, emergency stuff, when we did sewage and stuff in Alabama City. So we've used a lot of that in Alabama City, so I'd just like to keep up when, you know, you got the paint program closed or something, so I'll know.
Yes, sir. I'll send that to the city clerk and let her distribute that to you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have comments, and I shall go first.
Yes, Madam President.
Last week, when I was giving recognition to the ladies that had been on the council before me, I did not know at that time that Ms. Holly Aubrey had passed, and she had passed on last Sunday, and I believe they had her grace of services this past Saturday. So I'd just like to have condolences to her, her family, but she was one of the pioneers who were sitting on the city council at one time. And also, I, I know that Councilman Wilson did a shout-out, but not a big enough shout-out about the Eastern Corridor that's going to be coming to Gaston, that's kind of coming by the junior college, but that's a big thing. That's been going on. We've been, when I first came on the council, I remember going to Washington, D.C., and this is where Representative Adalhold said that money had been given probably over twenty-five years ago, twenty-five million dollars, but it came down to the state, but Gaston was taken off of the books. And so now the city has been working for the last fifteen years, the mayor, trying to get some relief, and we call it seven fifty-nine, because a lot of people over in that area complain about the eighteen-wheelers that go in that area. So this is a big thing. Two million dollars is, is a lot of money, and I'd just like for, for Mr. Williamson to come, and he's going to just tell you about the design and what that really, what that really means as far as, the work is not going to start, but it's a design, so I just want him to say something about that just for a minute.
Yes, ma'am. So that authorizes the preliminary engineering. That is a big step. That's an enormous step from the design side, from the engineer side. So what that does is, right now, they've done the preliminary survey. They've done some of their checks that they could do with that initial money that was set aside, and so this is the major next step, so where the layouts that we saw before, as of right now, we don't know that any of that's changed. That's what will happen in this phase. And so while they've had the surveys, you'll see the sta, or you have probably seen stakes in certain areas where those guys and those trucks have been. They'll take all that data and go through the actual formal design, get into the nuts and bolts and the details of it, so where if they need some additional surveys, some rideaway in some areas, maybe they didn't look at before, or they'll confirm their initial layout, either one. So this generally, more than gets the ball rolling. This could completely take care of all the design. It may initiate some additional phases once they get more information in, and so, again, greatly excited for our area, certainly. So many have worked on this, this project, from the mayor's office through several councils, et cetera. But yes, I guess to answer the biggest question, this is the actual design. We don't know if it will be done in-house in, in Aldott itself. Sometimes they'll work with consultants, but this is, this is not construction yet, but you can't get to construction without this. So this is the next major step.
Yeah, and I'm quite sure there are people in the East Gaston area that's going to be affected by the design, and so I'm quite sure that they will be contacted.
Yes, ma'am. No doubt.
Whenever that, after all of that design has been done or during that period.
A lot of times, no doubt, you'll see some different state Aldott trucks as they check some different things throughout this process, so you'll, you'll certainly see a presence. And, and again, just because you don't see somebody there doesn't mean it's not getting worked on. Their, their engineers will be hot and heavy going after it for quite some time. They'll get that team together and take off.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And the last thing that I, that I want to say is, I know that there's, there's crime. I'm going to talk, there's crime in every district, in every seven districts, but, but I, I represent District One, and I live over there in District Two and part of District Four, and last week, there was a incident where gunfire went off, and they had to lock down two schools or put them on lockdown. It's going to get warm. I know we can't solve the drug, the drug problem, and I know that we want businesses in the area, and they laugh at me when I say it's two businesses on East Broad, and I don't care how many times they call the police. It's two businesses on East Broad that, that if I had the power, if I was a genie, I would shut them down right now, because at any given time, you can see drug transactions going on all the time. And so we don't have to, I, I know we can't solve the drug problem. We haven't solved the drug problem. It was going on before, and, and like I said, it's in every district, but the one that stands out to me is what happened last week. Our children shouldn't have to go to school, or their parents shouldn't have to take them to school, and they see drug transactions, or they don't have to, they shouldn't be at school, and their parents have to worry about gun bullets. Don't have a name on them, or they don't have a number. So I, I'm just, I'm concerned about the people over there. I'm concerned about what's going on, and I just hope that one day we can do something, you know, shut them down if we have to, but that's all I have. We'll start over here with the mayor.
Only thing I'm thinking is, seven fifty-nine, you don't, you don't see much about it right now, but that's going to be a really big deal, traffic-wise and everything else, and commerce, people moving here, businesses. It's, it's going to be a big thing for us down the road. I guess you could hear me, couldn't you?
Yes.
I don't know if you could or not. Sorry. Thank you.
Councilman Worley?
Yes, I just want to, uh, talk about the job fair that we just recently had. The last report, we had seventeen people to get hired and several, several possibilities of people getting hired from the job fair. We wound up, we cut it off at fifty, but fifty-six employers showed up, so with over thousands of jobs available, and ninety-five percent of those jobs is right here in Edgewall County. So it's jobs out there, and if anyone that didn't go to the job fair, we had like a hundred, only had a hundred and forty-nine people to come through, but that's a lot, you know, for the coronavirus, because I know they had a job fair somewhere else, and they didn't have that many people come through. So you can go to the Career Center. The Career Center has all types of programs where they'll pay for your schooling, pay for you to be retrained. So just go to the Career Center. I got calls after the job fair where people was wanting to get their grandkids jobs, but for whatever reason, they couldn't make it to the job fair, so I sent them to the Career Center. We have jobs. So also, Councilman McKinnon, I tried to get a number on the shots, but Quality Life didn't do the shots over at Elliot, so I couldn't get you a number. That was the call I got when I walked down.
Who did the shots over there?
I don't, I don't know. That's what I'm trying to, I know they did the shots at Roberta Watts. They did over a hundred and thirty shots at vaccinations at Roberta Watts Saturday, and they will be here in town two more times next week, and they're already booked. You know, those numbers I gave out last week, you do just call those numbers. And also, we're working a plan right now to work with Quality Life to go to the Weather Cross to give shots, vaccinations to the homeless population. So that will be here in the next couple of weeks. So just thank, I want to thank Quality Life and all of the first responders and our healthcare workers for what they're doing. Thank you.
Councilman McKinnon?
Thank you, Madam President. I got a call, I think it was Thursday or Friday, from the mayor's office, from Alicia, said they was going to give them out. I was out of town this weekend, so I wasn't been able to go there. I was just trying to get a number to see how many we gave out, and I know we've got a lot of homeless in our, in District Six down there, and we want them all to get shots if we can. Also, too, we feed down there in District Six, seven days a week. You can eat at the Weather Cross Monday through Friday, and you can go to Elliot Community Center. I think it's about twelve o'clock. A lady from Love's Taxi Cab, I can't remember her name. Councilman Worley, do you remember her name? She feeds, she feeds on Saturday and Sunday, and also, uh, Sunday afternoon from, I think it's three to five. It's a gazebo. We've got a group down there also feeding, so you know, the homeless in Alabama City is not going without food right now. We just want to be able to make sure we get them all, all the shots if we can down there. I do want to say, I thank Frankie Davis for helping us with this seven fifty-nine. He was a big part of it, too. He's got a lot of contacts in Montgomery and around, and I want to thank you, Frankie, for helping us get that, what we're doing with it, and I'm just looking forward to it. I just, you know, hope it comes not too long where I'll be able to still see it, you know, and use it. And I just want to talk about the jobs. I think the reason people's not taking jobs, this is my opinion, you're getting three hundred dollars a week unemployment, plus your, you know, extra on top of your money, so you know, why would anybody want to go to work right now? I just don't, you know, if you go make, work at a job and make two hundred dollars a week or bring home two fifty when you can get that extra three hundred plus draw unemployment, I don't, I don't see no incentives to make them work myself, but that's just my opinion. That's all I got.
Councilman Reed?
I think I agree with you. I was sitting here thinking, I got a lot of negative things to say, but I think I'm going to save some of them. Positive things is, I came on this council with, with Holly Aubrey and Dawson Partey. One thing I remember both of them agreed on was, once you make up your mind, don't be intimidated. Stand straight up, because if you don't, they'll walk all over you. She told me the first day I met her, she said, "The day you go out of office, you'll have the same friends as when you went in." And I know that's true. So I don't think I want to elaborate too much, because right now, I might go a little too far. Next week, I'm going to go all the way with it. I think I'll just pass it on now, unless some of y'all are ready. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't have much to add, but I do want to explain my vote on the Airport Authority. I did vote to approve Mr. Billingsley, and I want to explain to y'all, and this is, I've, I've just always tried to be honest with y'all, and honestly, this was politics. It's no doubt, maybe some of y'all don't know this, but Mr. Billingsley used to hold my seat in District Five. He is very well-respected in my community, and it's no secret either that I've continued to support diversity initiatives in this city that promoted diversification of our boards and our leadership. So this vote put me in a very unique position to have to choose to be a hypocrite about my call for placing qualified minority candidates in positions of power in this community versus preserving my support of, of, or my opposition to the location of the rendering plant near the airport. So I just wanted y'all to know, that's the position I was in. It was either alienate myself on a position that I've made strongly over the last couple of years about the need for more diversity in this community and, and deny the fact that Mr. Billingsley is a leader in this community, and he's proven to be at, at one of the highest levels, or alienate myself from the opposition group that, that shares my
levels. Or alienate myself from the opposition group that, that shares my opinion that the rendering plant shouldn't be located near the airport. So I chose to stick with my heart and support what I've said all along, which I believe there does need to be more diversity in our councils. But what I'll say to all the rest of you about the, the rendering plan in general, and any perception that this plays into that, is I will support any call for a comprehensive review of the aviation operation in Gaston, any call for any review or audit of any kind. And I mean internally, I'm not necessarily implying any impropriety has taken place. But I come from the small business world. I'm a student of continuous improvement. And I believe you can always get better. And I believe that Airport Authority is no exception. And I would support any action to progress that. And specifically, I would support an amendment to their bylaws that, should it come before this council, that would require aviation experience directly on that board. But that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Baugh?
Thank you, Madam President. Noticed in the Gaston Times today, maybe, yeah, in the Gaston Times today, there was a nice article about an Eagle Scout from Sardis, DJ Langford embarked on a program to help pick up litter at Nakalula Falls. So he has built, and I guess they're placed, are gonna be placed, three trash where you pull a trash bag out from under a tube. And just wanna commend DJ for his efforts and his thoughtfulness in doing that. He's the second Eagle Scout that I know of that has done a project up at the falls. I don't know the other young man's name, but in the garden area, in the sensory garden area, there is a nice, really nice swing with the really stable frame. And it's a great place to go sit. And that was built by an Eagle Scout. So there are some really great young people in our community that are doing some nice things. And they've done them at Nakalula Falls. That's just, just wanna bring that to the attention of the public and to say publicly, thank those young men for their thoughts and, and their actions. Also, in the Gaston Times, it kinda dovetails into the CDBG conversation we're having about the $500,000. You may have noticed that we're, we're possibly gonna become a micro-city. That has some very, very negative consequences in regards to federal funding. And that could impact our city greatly. So we, we've gotta rally against that and hope that that does not take place in conjunction with recent conversation about our occupational tax, a $750,000 a year hit that would, over twenty years, total about $15.8 million. Coupled with a, a loss of those funds, if you remember last week, I think I spoke about money that the city spends in Gaston that impacts the entire region. I mentioned Nakalula Falls, Marana Park, I won't go through the whole list, but it totaled about $6 million. And so that could be impacted by the loss of these kind of revenues. Then we've got a category of, of spending called outside agencies. And there's, I'm not sure how many millions of dollars that the city spends there annually, but that could be impacted by the loss of, of these, of this revenue. So it's been pretty sobering to sit and see what possibly could be coming or not coming into the city as terms of revenue. And it's a, you'll, if those things all come to pass, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a different city. So we're gonna have to really sharpen our pencils, be a lot more than just belt tightening. It, it would be total wholesale changes, outside agency funding, like the Center for Cultural Arts, the library, the Gaston Museum of Art, places like that that are so dear and important to our city and our county and our region. Not saying they'd be cut, I'm just saying you have to look at everything on your expense side of the ledger when you start losing millions and millions of dollars on an annual basis. Not a one-time loss, but where your just, your, your income has dropped drastically. So those are just sobering thoughts of what this council has to look at, and the mayor, and the administration, and Lisa Ross, and our finance director. It's, you know, you have to plan for these things. If, if you think that it might happen, you have to start getting your plan. You can't wait till after it happens and then start planning. So that's why I'm talking about it now. We, we're gonna have to start having these discussions of how, how are we gonna, how are we gonna make it? How are we gonna make ends meet? Just like you would do at your house. Just like your household budget. If you lose your job, you have to sit down at the kitchen table and start making a plan. So we will go to the city's proverbial kitchen table and, and have to start looking at these things. And so just wanted to just make everyone aware that that's, that's the, the climate that we're in. And last but not least, I'd like to wish a very happy birthday to Ben Reed. I believe today is Ben Reed's birthday?
I thought we weren't allowed to talk about that.
That was the happy end.
Oh.
Was that? That's, that's, birthdays are great, especially when you're having one. So happy birthday, Ben. Madam President, that's, that's all I have.
Madam President, may I interject one thing that I forgot? I'm sorry. We're, we're having a kickoff, as I told you guys a few weeks ago. I'm heading up the Boy Scouts of America campaign for Edgewall County. We're having a little meeting tonight at Back Forty Beer Company at 6:30 to just kinda get, gather the group together and come up with some creative ideas for fundraising. If you can't make it tonight, please go to onbsa.org and click on Donate, and then click on Edgewall District. And that'll make sure that any money you donate to the BSA comes directly back to Edgewall County and, and the Boy Scouts that are here in Edgewall County. So thank you.
Councilman Will.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Reed, you care to elaborate on what the number is at this point?
Fifty-eight.
If, if you're standing on your head.
Yeah.
Look at the mirror.
Well, I do, do wanna extend a happy birthday to you. I definitely, I don't know, you know, I had an uncle who, who lived a, definitely not a boring life once, who told me as, in his waning years, that if I'd have known I was gonna be around this long, I'd have taken better care of myself. So, so I, I hope I'm around to say that, for sure. You know, I, I'll take the opportunity to say that I do appreciate each of you guys. And, and I think there's a lot of passion associated with, I think there's a lot of passion associated with individuals who choose to step up and, and serve, knowing that, that you'll get scrutinized to a large degree. And, and, you know, politics is difficult. You know, not every decision is black and white. There's a lot of gray in politics. And, and generally speaking, you're gonna make some people happy when you make decisions, and you're gonna, you're gonna upset others. So again, thank you for your courage. Thank you for your service, for each of you. The, the east, the eastern corridor, or what many of us for years have, have known as I-759, a lot of work has gone into that. And I do wanna thank everybody that's been responsible for keeping Gaston on the radar. I know, you know, I'm, obviously, I'm not nearly smart enough to, to second-guess or question anything Heath shared with us. And he really boiled his comments down significantly. But, but one of the things that, you know, kinda serves at the core of why that is an important project for this county and for this area is the, the, the traffic on four, on Highway 431 that is Meagan Boulevard. You have to know that, that we are well beyond capacity for that, for that thoroughfare. And, and it, and, and, and all you have to do on any given afternoon, or definitely on the weekends, is to go out there and, and you can see for yourself. We had the benefit of having the governor come here once, and he got in it himself. And it kinda sold it at the time. We just couldn't get through the politics then. But thank goodness, we have gained enough leverage politically to get it pushed through to this point. Again, I don't wanna jinx it, because there is a matter of luck associated with a lot of this. But we have, I think, have reached that point, that proverbial point of no return with this one. I think there's been enough spent and enough resources devoted towards it to where I, I think we're gonna see it. And, and we'll continue to push. We'll continue to push and, and try to push it through. But it's big. It's big for the city. There, there are people who believe on both sides of it. There's some that believe that, oh, it's gonna create a bypass scenario, and everything's gonna drive through the city. Nobody's gonna stop. But, but there, but there's a lot of data that suggests otherwise, that, that it will relieve the thoroughfare and, and allow for a smoother transition for people who are interested in patronizing our, our commercial interest there in East Gaston. And that's important to me because, again, I represent District Two, and, and, you know, that's smack dab in the middle of District Two. That, that thoroughfare almost splits my district in half. And so that's, that's important. And again, I'm excited about what's happened. You know, Councilman Baugh touched on a number of things that we talked about in our, in our Finance Committee meeting last week. And, and one of the things I want people to understand is that we, you know, when you wonder why we seek out boards and committees to serve on and, and look to do certain things in, in terms of advocating for the city, it's because of issues like the, the labeling of macro versus, I'm sorry, micro versus metro. It, if you're, one of the things that here recently has happened is that, as, as we all know, a huge stimulus package was just passed. Why is it important to be an entitlement city, which Gaston is right now? Well, if you're not an entitlement city, there's probably two or three between the feds and you getting your funding. There's probably two or three stopping points. And you gotta wait on others to release your money to you. As an entitlement city, Gaston's very fortunate that we're gonna get our funding directly from the feds. To lose that, you know, and that's just one example, obviously, but to lose that designation touches not only funding efforts like that, or funding issues like that, but it also, it also affects other, other, other funding issues. And Renee talked about HUD entitlement. That's important because she doesn't have to wake up every year and, and decide that I've gotta go to bat for the city and fight for our, our block grant. We're an entitlement city, so we get that block grant. You know, we just don't know how much it's gonna be from year to year. But we know if, if the funding is, is renewed, that we're gonna get something. And so again, it's important for us and cities around us that are entitlement cities to continue to fight for that and to continue to keep that on the radar. And one other thing to also that we talked about in the, in the Finance Committee meeting is you have to be careful, we have to be careful, how we project our city. Because everything we say, in particular as it relates to our finances, can have an impact, positive or negative, on our ability to leverage debt. And if you wanna see anything significant happen in your city, in your municipality, I don't care where you live in the country, you have to have the ability at some level to leverage debt. And, and I am so thankful that, for the three terms that I've been on the council, that we have been extremely, physically responsible. Not just a little bit, but we, we cleaned up a mess, you know, dating back to 2006. And, and we have managed to keep the city on very sound financial footing. And what that has done is it's allowed us to do some things in terms of growth projects and things of that nature. But it's also allowed us to weather some very difficult times without many people noticing it in the way of a loss of services or anything along those lines. So, you know, whether you're looking at me or not in, in a few years, please, as a, as a citizen, as a constituent, hold your elected officials accountable for being able to read a balance sheet, for being able to read an income statement, understanding a budget. Because so often, what really turns my stomach, and it kinda lends itself to the, the comments that Jason made about the boards, what really turns my stomach is so often, we put people in office who are popular at the moment. And, and it's one of the things that made me run, because I looked at our boards and our committees back then. And, and I can tell you that they were lily-white and, and largely unqualified. And that was, and that, and that definitely was not something that I was proud of as a citizen of Gaston. And so I'll, I'll leave you with this. There, there was, we, we had the privilege as a council to watch a video, just a small TED Talk that was conducted by Melanie Hobson. Melanie is the CEO of Aerial Investments. And, you know, Melanie talked about an experience that, that she had when she was asked about hiring, her hiring practices. And one of the people that came to her, asked her, and, and this, this is, this is a quote from her, from her commentary. One of the people that, that, one of, one of her employees came to her and said, "Okay, let me make sure I'm clear on this. Do you want me to hire the diversity candidate, or do you want me to hire the best candidate?" And she turned to that individual and she said, "Yes." And that's how I feel about committees, about boards. They don't always have to be separate and apart, all right? The, the qualified candidate can be the diversity candidate, and largely should be the candidate. I'm a huge proponent of qualified individuals serving on our boards and committees. But I refuse to buy into this notion that just because we are strongly advocating and actively sourcing for diversity on our boards and committees, that all of a sudden we're giving up qualifications. And that's not the case. And I think I sit here as an example of why that's not the case. And I thank God that my city largely is not that way. We've got some pariah amongst us, but largely, our city is not that way. And I thank God for that. Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry. Well, we got Lisa, 'cause I, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I forgot to say that Tuberville's office reached out to us this morning. And they're definitely on our side on trying to get, where we don't get downgraded. So they're working on it, and they said they would stay in touch with me. Thank you.
My question, 'cause I've heard several different numbers on occupational tax, if we lost it. Since you in here, Ms. Ross, could you, do you know the number off your, offhand? 'Cause I know when we lost Goodyear, that was 2.1, 2.2 million dollars worth occupational tax we lost. So...
You would start out about $750,000 for the first year, and of course, then it doubles out around every year. So the second year, it'd be 1.5 million, and then you go to 2.25. And when it gets down to the end of it, you're talking about a total of about $16 million.
Thank you. That's all. I'm sorry.
I call for a motion to adjourn.